Okay, welcome to our four o'clock work session for the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners. This is May 21st, 2013, and the only item on our agenda today is a discussion of the budget for 2014, fiscal year 2014.
Thank you, Mayor. It's a pleasure again to present for the Board of Commissioners the 2013-2014 budget. As in past years, we're going to use a team approach to presenting the city manager's budget recommendation. We use a budget team to do that. I'll lead off and give an overview and provide some general themes for the budget coming year. I'll be followed by Jeff, who will give you the revenue picture, followed by Katie Schaller, who will talk about our expense side. Michael Grubbs will talk about personnel and capital, and then Katie will again finish up with contract agencies that we fund. Pursuant to law, you all have until June 30th, 2013, to pass a budget for the City of Bowling Green. It takes two readings. Before I start, I would like to thank a number of people who've been involved in the budgetary process. First of all, I'd like to thank the budget team and like to introduce them. There's Katie Schaller, who's our Assistant City Manager/City Clerk. Jeff Meisel, our CFO. Michael Grubbs, who is a Human Resources Director but does a lot of other things for us. Wilma Brown, our Comptroller. And finally, Aaron Bellew, our Senior Staff Accountant. If you notice a different format in this year's budget, that's a result of Aaron's creative formatting. Can you all hear me okay? Good. So that's our budget team. I would also like to thank our senior managers, who are assembled here to answer any micro questions that you may have about certain spending items. I'd also like to thank our employee groups, who we all met with, to get their input about the budget, as well as our community partners. I'll be the shortest of speakers and talk to you a little bit about the general themes. A budget, in its purest sense, is a story of our values put to numbers. We use numbers to convey what we believe in and what we hold to be important. And budgets, as we all know, are about making choices. One of the principal concepts of economics is the concept of scarcity. There's never enough resources to go around to meet everybody's needs. So we have to make choices to say we value one thing more than another. Later, Jeff, Katie, and Mike will detail for you our recommendation as to those values and priorities we feel important. In order for a budget to also be valuable and for helping the Board of Commissioners make decisions about choices, we believe that we need to also follow a set of values in making a budget. And to that end, the budget before you is underpinned by certain fiscal values and principles that we live by and use in making this budget. First, we believe that we need to live within our means. We don't create money. We're given the privilege of, by the public, to make the choice for them about how we should use it and what our values are. People, second, people want to live in a place that's special. And when they move to a community, they want their city government to make investments in that community that helps to make that a special place. When they come to a community, they want to feel safe. They want a feeling of safeness. If you talk to anybody, anyone involved in economic development, people will not come to this community or any others, which they don't feel safe. People, we're a mobile community, and they want to drive on good roads. They also want a community in which they have a strong sense they won't be flooded out, and the stormwater produced in neighborhoods will be managed. They also want the ability to convey by walking to other parts of communities. Our employees also choose to work with us because they too want to feel special and contribute to the specialness of Bowling Green. They want to be given a fair wage and benefits. They want to be given good equipment so they can efficiently do their job. And finally, at a minimum, employees want a safe and decent place to work. Accomplishing these goals is never easy. It requires a fiscal discipline to make this happen. Some of the discipline we choose to apply is to pay our bills. People will not want to do business with the City of Bowling Green if we don't pay our bills, so that's always one of our values. We choose to keep debt low and continue to drive down the cost of borrowing money. It's been a strategy of this commission, I know, and a strategy of our budget team to try to keep debt as low and as manageable as possible. And that's, we take that very seriously. Third, you need to plan for a rainy day. If you don't have the money for a rainy day, you're going to be facing cliffs. But we also believe it's not an excuse to conveniently go into our rainy day fund to bail this organization out from difficult times. We also believe that we need to seek efficiencies by always watching our costs. Primarily among that is our payroll costs. Do we have the right balance of incentive, of people in the right places doing the right amount of work for the people of this community? We also believe that we need to work with our partners, primarily Chamber of Commerce, the Chapter 58, Warren County, and in some degree WKU, to create jobs. Without jobs, we do not have a community. We also have to understand, and I know we do, that we are more and more a part of a global community. We're just not in South Central Kentucky. The reach of the world extends from here and beyond, and we need to give our image to not only our citizens, but the world, and we're increasingly using social media to do that. We also finally have to understand, and I know this commission does, that in order to call ourselves special, we need to be special for everyone who lives here. And that our demographic is changing both numerically and culturally. We must commit to serving that full demographic of citizens and deal with a change matrix that's occurring right now. And finally, one of our driving values and principles is to, and it's very simple, it's in our annual report every year, to provide the best services at the lowest appropriate cost. It's not a very fancy mantra, but if we can do that, we've done our job. Again, to provide the best services at the lowest appropriate cost. Budgets are rarely statically fixed. We too, like citizens who are watching this program, or families who are dealing with budget, are affected by cyclical economic change. Over the last 10 years, the city has experienced numerous cycles. I've been honored to be here for some of that. But the high watermark of our having resources, probably in the 2003 period, 2004, we had resources to make many, many investments in the community. A number of us sitting around today have weathered the deep recession that affected this community from 2008 to 210, and to some degree even today. During that period, we'd lost about 4% of our revenue. We had to make sacrifices in order to that, to work. Today, we find ourselves in another cycle, in the midst of what is essentially a plateau, a cycle of plateau. If you study our numbers, our growth rate of the occupation tax is roughly 2.1 to 2.5 over the last five years. That's not robust, nor is it bad, but it is relatively static. And with that relative state of plateau, one must make choices. You can only do so much with so much money. A little helpful factoid would be good for us all. In this budget that's presented to you today, before we started, about 92 cents of every dollar was already preset by choices that we had made to serve the public. Number of people that we had, the existing debt we had, the basic cost of services. Our job essentially is to figure out how we are going to creatively use the remaining eight cents of dollar, since we're not going to create more money. We're not going to print more money. We have eight cents to work on. What's to our advantage? Over the last five, six years, we have essentially reduced the cost of running this company or organization today at a percentage less than it used to be run. So that does help us. Well, how do we decide where we should spend our eight dollars? We can go back and change 92 cents, $92 that we've already made decisions on, but we feel that you wouldn't have voted for that unless you wanted that. How do you make the decisions on the remaining either eight bucks or eight cents? You go to your core values. That's a simple way not to get in trouble, a simple way financially to ride the course of all these cycles. In this budget, we propose to, again, invest first in our citizens. People bring us here to City Hall because they expect a nice community, a special place. What makes that special is good roads. What makes that special is sidewalks. What makes that special is stormwater. And in this budget, you will find investments made in that. They also want a feeling of safety. And you see, in this budget, we made an investment that we've been working on for three years to provide a new 800 megahertz radio system. We've done it in a collaborative way with our partner across the way, with Warren County. We feel it's important also to invest in our employees, and you'll see in this budget that we're looking at ways to provide a safer work environment, as well as to provide equipment and to give all employees who have earned that an incremental increase in their salary. We believe that working with the A cents and making do with that is all about balancing the various fiscal factors. Keeping costs low, living within our means, making highly prioritized investment, and at the end of the day, if we stay true to those values, we can manage whatever cycle we go through. Whimsically, a number of us on the budget team are often asked, when are the good times going to return? For us, it's almost a moot question. We manage and deal with the cards that we're dealt with despite the cycle. And if you stay true to your core values, fiscal values, and community values, you can manage whatever cycle is upon you. After I get finished speaking here, the next person to come up will be Jeff Meisel, and he will talk to you about revenues, followed by Kate. Michael, again, Kate. After everyone's done, we stand ready to help the commission in its job of looking at this budget and making changes to it, and hopefully passing it by June 30th. I would ask Jeff Meisel to come forward to give an overview of our revenues for the coming fiscal year. Jeff?
Thank you, Kevin. Before we get started, or before I get started, and before I forget, I would like to also thank Erin again for everything she's worked on here. She's been a tremendous help putting all this together, and she also helps me with some revenue projections with all the other funds. We have between 70 and 80 funds that we have to set a budget for, so it is a lot of funds to keep up with. In addition to Erin, I would also like to thank Sean Weeks, my staff accountant over in finance, for helping me with a lot of the projections. Obviously, I can't be everywhere all the time and get it all done without these folks, so I want to thank them. See if I can get this going here. First slide shows kind of an overall view, overview, and you'll see the slide later on before we get into the expenditures. But basically, here's your all funds. All funds right here, or actually, it's FY13 where we think we're going to finish, but all funds revenue, this current fiscal year was $92 million. We're looking at just under $95 million for FY14 on revenues. Katie will speak to the expenditures in a moment, but going from the adopted $92 million to this 104, you've got a lot of, some budget amendments, you've got carryovers that occur. We had a bond issue during the year that bumped that up, a lot of different things going to play. All the general fund transfers out that we did at the end of last year that carried over into this year. So that's why you see such the big difference going from the adopted to the estimated for the 13 when we end the year. So down below, you have the general fund revenue. We began the year, this year, at 52,32 for the adopted budget. We're projecting 53,582. That's about a 2.3% increase from this figure for the FY13 adopted. And we feel like we're going to finish right, a little bit over 53 million. That's assuming about a 2% growth, I believe, from the FY12 actual figures. Pie charts, this shows your all funds breakdown. As you can see, even all funds, the occupational fees make up 42.8% across the board. Then you've got your taxes, which include all your property taxes, making up 16.3%. And then we have a lot of transfers in, which is just basically transfers between funds, whether it be capital project funds and the general fund, a lot of that that goes on, which somewhat inflates your budget when you look at all funds, but it is what it is. And then you've got all your other categories, grants is under the intergovernmental, fees, parks and recs, and so on. And then you've got a little bit of note and bond proceeds that happen too. And then over here, you've got general fund. Again, occupational tax is roughly 72% now, the general fund, and your property taxes, insurance premium taxes thrown in with that, I believe, or make up about 24%. Property taxes are right around 19%, 20%, and then that other 3% or 4% is mainly your insurance premium taxes, that sort of thing. This is kind of a history of the general fund. Back in '04, we had the 1.5% occupational tax rate, which was increased to 2%. Happened right in that period there. You can see the climb. And then right around '07, decided to drop it from 2% down to 185, and you saw slight flattening or lowering there. And then we started, this also includes the recession coming out of that, and then your bar chart, your total for general fund. And right in this period here is kind of the recession. We kind of lagged a little bit behind. FY11 was probably our worst revenue year. And then you look at FY12, I will note that FY12, we hit over $53 million, but about a million, one of that was some transfer in money that we brought back in from the old Morgantown Road project, some unspent bond proceeds that we turned around and reallocated other places, such as Cave Mill Road and other capital projects that was spent back out of general fund. And then we're looking at, again, FY13, this current fiscal year, we're about 10 months through, through April, we were looking at about a 1.8% growth over last year at this time. So I feel like we're steady so far through 10 months, and April and June, or May and June will of course tell the true tale, but I feel like we'll be fine. We'll finish somewhere above $53 million, maybe $53.2 million for the year, which is steady and strong. It's just, that's kind of a backwards look at general fund. These next couple of slides, I'm going to kind of break you down what makes up that general fund budget. Today is, we'll focus mainly on the general fund during our presentations. And that, going from the 53, or 52,385 figure for FY13 budget to the 53,585 million dollar number for FY14, is about a million two in real dollars increase. That $1,200,000 is found in basically two places. There's $312,000 that we budgeted increase in personal, in property taxes, and that's mainly in the personal property taxes. We've seen some good growth there, and we've also seen some growth in the motor vehicle tax. Can't explain how that happens, but it's happened. We did not change the real estate tax. We're not anticipating any kind of tax rate increase in the fall. We've left it the same. We're right at that budget target for this year for the real estate tax. We're going to be real close in meeting it, so we decided not to budget any growth there. So mainly, this growth in the property tax line or category here is mainly in your personal property tax and your motor vehicle. The next line is other taxes. That includes mostly your insurance premium tax. It's also your bank franchise tax, the natural gas franchise, and your telecommunications tax. As you can see, there's only $6,000 we budgeted there for growth, and that was mainly in penalties and interest. We've left everything pretty flat there. We're not going to, we're probably not going to meet our budget this year for the insurance premium tax and the general fund, so left it alone, left it the same. Hopefully, we'll meet that next year. The other, the other, the other place where that $1,200,000 is made up is you've got roughly $870,000 of budget growth in the occupational fees. As I mentioned, the main driver there is the withholding fees. We've run all year roller coaster, but since January of this year, we've stayed within the 1% to 3% growth range. We're kind of in a trough right now on our withholding fees, which is, which is good to see. Back in August, back in the fall, we hit a negative 8.9. I was kind of scratching my head. I thought, is this real? Is this really happening? And then September came, and we hit back to positive 2.5. October, we dipped again to negative 1.7, recovered again in November, plus 0.8. December, we dipped again to negative 2.6. So the first six months of the year were like this, but since January, we've seen a more consistent, steady gradual climb. And through April, on the withholding fees, we're sitting at plus 2%. So I felt confident in our projection there. And just a side note on my philosophy when it comes to budgeting, I'm most likely always going to take a conservative approach. I don't believe in taking a risk and projecting huge growth, sticking our necks out, relying on, you know, unrealistic growth figure, because you hit December mid-year or so, you realize, hey, we're in trouble, and then you're scrambling, trying to meet budget by, you know, the second half of the year. So that's the approach we've taken. As you can see in these other categories, I'll show you in just a second, we kind of look at trends, we look at averages, that sort of thing. And then, but on this occupational fees, some may agree, some may disagree, but we go with what we get comfortable with, and our comfortable figure here is about $38.5 million for occupational fees. By the way, the service enhancement fees is the 0.35% of the 1.85%. People ask me, why do you still track that separately? Well, in the last 10 fiscal years, we've had three different occupational tax rates. So when you look at trying to figure growth, you have to look at, well, is that growth related to the tax rate increase or the tax rate decrease? Is it real? Is it, is it not real? So we've kept tracking that separately, so we have that 1.5% baseline that we've always had since the beginning of time. We know how it's growing, and then we know how this 0.35 or 0.5 or whatever it ends up being, we know how that's tracking too. So we've continued to track it separately. Your other categories here, your license and permits, examples of that would be your ABC fees for alcohol beverage control, your building permits, plan review permits, electrical permits, that sort of thing. We've kept it pretty flat, as you can see. We do think we'll hit 956 this year, but on average, we keep, you know, bumping up a little bit gradually. We're going from 903,500 to 908 for FY14, just a steady gradual climb there. And then grants, we don't anticipate much change there. We budgeted $100,000 again, despite bringing in the 173.5 this year. On grants, we don't ever budget them until we know for sure we're going to get them. We, as you can see, a lot of grants come through the budget amendment process later throughout the year when we get them and they're approved. Charges for services, this category here includes things like record fees down to police, school tax collection fees that we get from city schools for collecting their property taxes. That's a 2% fee. Also includes Section 8 inspection fees, fireworks fees, anything we get there, public safety, cost recovery type fees, code enforcement, and this also includes cemetery. Don't, I can't remember what that growth is, but it's pretty flat growth, going to 556,500 to 584,700. Again, this looks like, hey, we're not capturing all the growth, but this is based, again, on three and five-year averages. It's kind of a steady upper trend. Just, just because we collected this, this year, we don't always rely on that same number. We look at more averages in these other categories. And then this other, next category is parks and recs. That includes your, any kind of rentals for parks, facilities, fitness, any kind of recreational fees, registration fees for teams, that sort of thing. And again, we're budgeting pretty flat growth there, adjusting it down slightly to the 372.8. So, last two categories here, miscellaneous, is things such as interest earnings, rental, rental income, sale of equipment such as our auction proceeds, judgments and settlements, parking fees, contributions and donations. Again, adjusted it slightly down based on our averages we've seen the last couple of years. We think we might hit around this number here, but felt more comfortable with the 325.5. So again, of your $1,200,000 in budgeted growth, around $300,000 of it's in property taxes, and the other, close to $900,000 is in occupational tax, mostly withholdings. The net profit fees, again, I didn't budget any growth there either, left, felt like those needed to be left alone, same budget as FY13. Forgot to mention that. This is just, again, a comparison of all funds. This, I can't, I don't really have a lot to say about this slide, but it's kind of, this is how it all falls out across the board by these same categories I just mentioned for general fund, only this is for all funds. So this will have all your special revenue funds in here. This occupational fees would include things like your Heartland Tax District and so forth, all your grants that are received, and all the other funds with police, fire, the CDBG, any kind of NCS-type grants would fall under there. And then here's all your fees and charges across the board. Parks and recs here would include golf and aquatics, and miscellaneous is pretty much everything else. Here's that million one we've got. Here's that million one we've got budgeted now for the eight hundred radio system. I think I've talked to most of you, we're gonna, we've changed plans on that. We're going to go ahead and use the two million two in cash. We've saved up, county's decided to bond their portion, so we're only going to end up borrowing around one point one million for hours. I'm going to probably put that on a shorter term for financing. Here's your transfers in, which don't always match transfers in versus transfers out, but here's your transfers in budgeted, here's your thirteen versus your fourteen, sets up slightly. From here, I'm going to turn it over to Katie Schaller for the expenditure section, and I can answer any questions later if you have on revenues.
As Jeff mentioned, I'm going to talk about the expenditure side, and this is the same chart you saw at the beginning, but I'm going to talk about expenses on this chart. And when looking at this particular chart and the expenditures, we have proposed a modest increase from FY thirteen to FY fourteen for the all funds, which is your second line in, from ninety-five point five million to about ninety-nine point six million, which is about four million dollar increase or four point three percent. If you actually remove the capital items from the all funds budget, we would have a negative half percent decrease going into FY fourteen versus FY thirteen, which is four hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. And similarly with the general fund expenditure lines, we're proposing to increase that by seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars over FY thirteen from fifty-three point one million to fifty-three point eight million, fifty-three point nine, and that's about a one point four percent increase. Again, if you take out the capital items so that we're looking at just operating base in the general fund, we are actually reflecting a slight increase of about one percent, which amounts to three hundred and eighty-five thousand, five hundred dollars for FY fourteen. And again, similar to the revenue side, this is the expenditure side. The first pie chart there is all funds, and you can see that public safety represents thirty-one percent of the all funds budget and forty-five percent of the general fund budget. Transfers out is the next largest piece of the pie at thirteen point seven percent for all funds and seventeen point three percent for the general fund. And if you exclude the debt, which is at twelve point five percent in the all funds chart, the remaining departments add up to about forty-three percent of the pie. And in comparison, in general fund, the rest of the departments add up to about thirty-eight percent of the expenditure budget. And again, like the revenue side, we're looking at the expenditure side and our historical trends in actual expenses compared to our personnel expenses. And that's the middle line that you see going through, that's our personnel costs. And basically, we're providing this chart to show you a little bit more of a perspective on how personnel expenditures account for the largest part of the city's general fund budget. And although expenditures have peaked in two thousand and eight, we have progressively brought those down. In two thousand and eight and two thousand and seven, we had a very aggressive capital budget. So those carried forward and show the significant increase there. We've been able to achieve a relatively flat personnel expense despite the increases in CERS rates over the past few years, adding cost of living adjustments and step increases, basically by reducing our workforce numbers, combining jobs where we could, holding some jobs vacant where feasible, non-public safety positions, holding those vacant for as long as we can, again, to provide some savings in our budget. And that's how we've been able to keep those personnel costs down. This goes a little bit more detail of the personnel expenditures, including several retirements and subsequent promotions and appointments over this past year. We've been able to reduce our FY fourteen recommended personnel budget because we've got individuals now starting at lower rates in the schedule. And so that's helped to keep our costs down, even though we've added cost of living adjustment and step increases in this budget for next year. In addition, we've got a reduction in CERS rates for FY fourteen, which is saving us a hundred and eighty-two thousand, six hundred dollars. And then the other personnel costs include medical, dental, life insurance, vision, and workers' compensation expenses. And those expenses change mid-year with open enrollment, so usually January one, we'll have some adjustments in our budget to those bottom line numbers, some plus or minus throughout the year if there's some qualifying events that change for some of the employees as well, going from single to family, that sort of thing. So those, those numbers will fluctuate a little bit. And then the other benefits includes a slight increase because we're adding a little bit more money into our tuition reimbursement program based on some increases the past few years in tuition rates at WKU and other universities and colleges. And then we also are providing a stipend to some employees, and that stipend has increased for some of the eligible employees, so that's a very small addition to the budget. As we go through the next few slides, it's important to note that staff continues to review each of the expenditure line budgets, and as I'm sure the department heads will reflect, I'm very diligent on making sure that we are having the right expenses for the right type of purchases that we do, and so we will follow historical trends, and we will also reduce costs wherever feasible. The contractual services are up by about half a percent for FY fourteen compared to FY thirteen, which is about forty thousand, five hundred dollars. And this is primarily due to an increase in the utility rates coming forward and then also in our fleet maintenance costs. As our fleet continues to age, so do our increase in costs continue in that regard. Supplies increased by about two percent or twenty-seven thousand, six hundred dollars because of a capital expenditure for the upgrade in some exterior lighting for the police department from regular light bulbs to LED lights to provide some more energy efficiency and hopefully some savings down the road in those expenditures. And then a couple one-time smaller capital asset purchases are proposed to be made in FY fourteen, again, improving energy efficiencies at parks and police, and they account for the hundred percent increase that we're proposing for fixed assets next year. As the activities in the downtown Tiff district continue, which is a good thing, so does our share of the eighty percent growth that we pay out to the downtown economic development authority, Warren County Downtown Economic Development Authority. In addition to that, next year's budget also continues the cover program, which is in our neighborhood and community services department, and that's our code fence volunteer eligible repair program. We did not add money in the budget last year because we had some carry forward that we could continue with that, and we put that money towards some proposed demolition that we were looking at. This year, we brought that twenty thousand back into the budget. So it's about a two point seven percent increase or forty-seven thousand, four hundred dollars. And then the transfers out include expenses for debt and capital projects among, among a few smaller items. And we go into our debt service fund. This is a reflection of all funds and basically indicates that forty-six percent of the budget for debt is in the general fund, which is about six million dollars. And the special revenue funds, the debt would be in our fire improvement fund and then our job development incentive fund. Under enterprise funds, it's the convention center, golf and aquatics. And then we do get reimbursements from WKU and Warren County. And looking more specifically at our general fund debt, eleven point two percent of the city's general fund expenditure budget is dedicated to the payment of previously approved financial obligations. Debt service for FY fourteen is expected to be slightly more, or excuse me, slightly less than, than this current year, since we've paid off a couple of debt items. The Fourteenth Avenue debt was paid this year. We paid that in full, leaving just the Lapsley Lane portion of that line to continue. And then the Warren County Water District Industrial Park, we went ahead and paid that off this year as well. Again, we're proposing to use three hundred thousand dollars of fund balance to make one-time equipment replacement purchases, which Mike will discuss when he talks about capital improvement projects. And this compares to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of fund balance that we had in the fiscal year thirteen budget and one point eight million dollars we had in the fiscal year twelve budget and five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars we had in the fiscal year eleven budget to use fund balance specifically for capital projects. So this is, of the past four years, the lesser of those amounts. Looking at all funds, again, this is just a simple chart. Basically, all funds is, the contractual services is the largest cost increase that you'll see, and that is directly related to the eight hundred megahertz radio replacement project going forward at three point three million, whereas we are holding on the line with personnel expenses and then also decreasing most of the other classifications. And as I mentioned earlier, if you exclude capital expenditures and compare just operating to operating for each of fourteen and thirteen, the FY fourteen budget is proposed to be less by about four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. And now I'd like to turn it over to Human Resources and Risk Management Director, Michael
Thank you, Katie. Good afternoon. I appreciate the opportunity to come speak to you. I don't think I've been up since our issue with the medical consultant, so I'm hoping this goes a little better. Even wore a neutral shirt so as not to draw undue attention to myself. Talked to you for a few minutes about personnel services for the next year, the recommendations of the budget relate to wages, benefits, classification, and also our workforce complement. The total impact for next year with the recommendations in the general fund is just under eight hundred thousand dollars. And as a comparison to the year we're in right now and that we're ending, the impact this year was actually expected to be over one point two million dollars, and that's because the Consumer Price Index went up higher last year, or the year before this last, and also we had the mandated increases in the retirement rates. So good news as far as the city budget is the impact for this coming year is going to be less for the general fund than this year that we're ending. Talking about employee raises, the cost of living adjustment would be one point seven percent. The city commission, the past city commission adopted a policy a few years ago, said, where possible, we'll follow the recommendation of the Department of Local Government on the CPI, the national CPI, and for two thousand and twelve, that increase was one point seven percent. Again, by comparison, the previous year was two point nine six percent. Thus, one of the reasons why our, our budget will not increase as much this coming year. What we do is we, obviously, all employees would receive the one point seven percent increase. We also adjust our pay schedule, so the starting rates go up by the one point seven, the maximum rates go up by one point seven. That helps to rate, to maintain a market comparison. In two thousand and six, we adopted a new merit step plan. It went into effect in fiscal year two thousand and eight, was in effect for two years, and then due to the economic conditions, it was actually deferred for two years. When we reinstituted in two thousand and seven, we went with something called a half a step rather than a step every two years. There were various reasons for that, one being that it helps to even out the cost from year to year, also eliminated some pay inequity issues we were running into. So we've now been back with the half-step program for two years, and we plan to continue that into FY two thousand and fourteen. Overall, the average increase for those employees that would receive the increase will be the one point two eight percent. For general employees, it's around one point two, for public safety employees, one point three five. And actually, if you were a starting firefighter or a police officer with one years of service, it's going to be about one point five three percent. Depends on where someone is in their pay schedule. If someone's at the beginning of their schedule, the percentage is going to be worth more than if you're at the top of your schedule. An employee has to have at least satisfactory service. They can't have been hired or promoted during the fiscal year, so not everyone receives that step increase, and we're estimating the impact on budget would be about one point one percent. So you could say if an employee is eligible and receives a step increase, they're going to receive a one point seven percent COLA and again, a one point one on average, so just under three percent total. Part-time employees, we also adjust that schedule. This year, it will be by fifteen cents an hour, which averages out to the one point seven percent. For those employees who've been with us a year or if they're seasonal, they're returning from last year, and if they are still within their pay grade, they'll also receive a ten cent an hour increase, is sort of a step increase. That helps to keep us from having everybody at the starting rate for part-time seasonal. Each year, we also look at any issues we have in our classification system. If we have any serious inequities, departments and employees are allowed to submit requests for any changes in classification due to taking on additional responsibility or if there's some serious internal equity issues. This year, we're recommending four position upgrades. None of those are in upper management. Those are outlined in Appendix D of your budget book. There's one position each in finance, IT, public works, and parks and recreation. The rationale has been provided to you, but basically, it's those persons have taken on additional level of responsibility in the case of one position, and a supervisory position was eliminated some years ago. The employee has taken on additional work in support of the department head. We have internal equity issue where someone is one grade below other people that is basically doing the same level of work as, or because of a change in organizational structure where a position is going to become a division head and will be supervising someone who's currently in a higher pay grade. But again, we've provided separately that information to you, and those are listed in the budget book for public information. CERS, as Katie mentioned, we've got some good news this year that the CERS rates for next year will actually go down, which is the first reduction since two thousand and nine. For hazardous duty, the rate is going down five percent to thirty-five point seven, and non-hazardous drops to three, drops three point four percent to just under nineteen percent. We've provided information for you just to show how much the rates have gone up for the last ten years and in actual budget dollars, you know, an increase of four point three million dollars next year compared to where we were ten years ago, which obviously, you know, that's money that's not available for the city to use for other, other public needs. Our medical benefits plan, as we've talked to you about in recent months, we made some changes, some significant changes in two thousand and nine that have helped us to stabilize our costs. The costs last fiscal year were actually slightly less than they were in two thousand and eight, and that's for our health, dental, and vision plans put together. Our costs are up this year. We have some serious high claimants that's going to affect our claims this year and next, and also will affect our stop-loss premiums. But at this time, we're not proposing any significant changes to the medical plan. We did eliminate our two hundred plan, kind of our original plan that we had, that was eliminated January first. We do have four and a half million dollars in our trust fund that's been built since we started the self-funded program twenty years ago. As previously mentioned, we are in the process of having an actuarial study done by our medical consultant to determine what our need is, you know, how much money do we really need to keep in that fund. But we'll be using that fund to help offset any increases beyond what we've budgeted this coming year. Moving into the city workforce and our complement, again, a lot of this information is provided in Appendix D for you. A city workforce, the high total was in two thousand and eight when we had a total of seven hundred and fifty-nine positions. That includes everything, part-time, full-time. We're proposing this coming year to have a complement of seven hundred and thirty-one, which is a reduction of about three point seven percent since two thousand and eight. We actually, since, over a period of time, we've reduced our workforce by about five percent since two thousand and eight. Almost all of that, or all of that coming in outside of the police and fire departments. For anyone who may have trouble with colors, the first bar in each year is for full-time police and fire departments, and that's all personnel in those departments, not just sworn. The middle lowest color is for all other full-time employees, and then the last color in each bar is, for each year. That is a part-time seasonal, the number that's slightly higher in all the years that's part-time seasonal. Position budgeting, this year, we're only recommending one change. Sometimes we have several requests for new positions or to add hours to part-time positions, but this year, we've just got one we're recommending, and that's in broadcast, to take a position presently budgeted at thirty hours a week and make it full-time so that that individual can help with producing in-house more videos about city services and devote, devote more time to... to production for both Channel Four and the city website to help with other public information efforts. With all this, the city workforce will have declined by a net of four positions. Since the budget was adopted this time last year, we've had some attritions in places where we've eliminated positions, combined positions, so we will have a net reduction even with this one addition. In review, we have the 1.7% COLA for all full-time, plus the merit step increase for those that are eligible. For part-time employees, 15 cent an hour COLA, plus a 10 cent an hour step for those that are eligible. Some rate relief for CERS this coming year. We're not recommending other changes in benefits, except, as Katie mentioned, we are increasing the limit we have on education assistance. We, in 2010, adopted a limit of reimbursing employees from no more than $4,000 a year. We're increasing that to 4,800 based on tuition increases that Western has had since then. And again, we've slightly reduced the workforce census. Now, I'm going to move into our capital budget, some of which we've already covered in the expenditure section of this presentation. This is a seven-year, past seven-year historic kind of listing of our capital budget. The total this coming year is going to be 22.3 million, which is higher than it's been any year since 2008. Again, debt is a significant portion of that, but remains pretty steady. The general fund, including debt, will be 2.5 million this year, which is slightly less than the last couple of years, but obviously, better than it was in 2009, 2011. And then, debt as a percentage of CIP will be 59%, which, again, is much better than it was the last few years. But you go back to 2007, when we had a lot of projects that we were going to be issuing some debt for, debt was only 27% of our capital budget seven years ago. Excluding debt, we have about 9.1%, 9.1 million for new product, projects, which is reflected here, again, 59% debt and 41% capital. That $13 million figure does include reimbursements from Warren County to help with ITA and also Western to help with, well, to actually cover the Dill Arena debt, so that number includes reimbursements. If we look at strategic goals, kind of the city's major goals that have been established by the city commission, community livability, improving traffic flow, and then also, sustainable city government, we see this coming year, a much larger piece of the pie going to sustainable city government, but a good chunk of that is the radio system. About over a third of the entire capital budget, non-debt capital budget next year is for the radio system. But we do have $1.1 million budgeted for road and traffic projects, and the same amount, again, for other community livability projects. Looking at community livability, stormwater mitigation, since the May 2010 storm, and prior to this budget, the city's budgeted over $1.6 million to address serious flooding and drainage areas of the city, and the budget this coming year, again, recommends $500,000 from new general fund money to help address serious stormwater issues. Again, another $400,000 budgeted for new sidewalks, again, using local tax dollars, plus $100,000 in state funds to continue reconstruction of existing sidewalks using state funds. Heritage Trail is a project that has come back up recently. We're proposing budgeting and using $50,000 to address the area between Third and Sixth Street. Much of the rest of that walkway, alleyway, pathway between Fountain Square and the riverfront either has been completed or with private partner, private-public partnership will help to address completing that, and so, this, these funds will help with the section in between that still needs to be addressed. There are some flooding issues. We'll need to dig out the alleyway and actually address it to improve drainage and also put in signage and markings. Parks and Recreation budgeting, about $100,000 primarily for UV disinfection system. We want to continue and finish up work at the Russell Sims Aquatic Center, and then also, we want to address Circus Square since that's become a downtown park, a pool, and obviously, we need to address the water there so that it's clean. Improved traffic flow, $900,000 again in state funding to resurface roads using the priority system that Public Works has set up. That will allow us to do about 4.5 miles. We also have a project, $45,000 for the Broward Wood School Connector to help reduce queuing of cars on neighborhood streets. This will provide an additional access point out of Lover's Lane at the Saka Complex, and it's dependent on the county schools constructing a new drop-off lane on its property. Downtown signals, kind of the last intersection that the city is responsible for, where we have not upgraded the signals, is the Normal Avenue Regents, Regents Drive over next to Western, and we will do the same kind of work there that we've done elsewhere in downtown to finish this up. And we have a major intersection improvement project for 12th Avenue and State, a very busy intersection where we're going to replace the road surface with concrete in order to improve the performance and longevity, and we'll do other work there as we find necessary as we get into that project. Sustainable City Government, $6.8 million, again, 3.3 million of that is the radio system that has already been presented to you, working with the county in order to provide much better coverage for the city and the county. Multiple towers with redundancy. As Jeff mentioned, we have most of the money already saved for that, and the rest we'll finance. Information technology, we have $87,000 for our SAN network to expand so that we have redundancy in order to save our data in case anything were to happen. And then, we also have the uninterrupted power source battery in our main data center in the city hall annex to, it's about five years old, and we need to make sure that we've got backup there in case a generator were to go out. Technology for the police department, we're going to be replacing all the in-car cameras. We need to do some upfront work to make sure that we have a redundant system where we can store that data in more than one location. And then also, the alternate 911 center that we have presently does not have the capacity to record audio in a digital capacity, so we want to be able to have that as well in case something happened to our main 911 center. Each year, we also look very carefully at what equipment needs to be replaced. We set aside funds to help provide for this. This coming year, we're proposing a budget of over $660,000 for equipment replacement. Much of that is for 12th police cars and their related equipment. Two staff vehicles in the fire department, we're going to replace two leaf machines, and asphalt hot patch trailer in public works, as well as a flatbed truck that has a liftgate. We have an eight-passenger van in, used in special populations that will replace, as well as one inspection vehicle in Neighborhood and Community Services. Facility improvements, $2.6 million. That includes everything from the Sloan Convention Center for exterior improvements, and also to replace hardware in the restrooms, to put in a very nice-looking security fence around the police headquarters parking lot. As Katie mentioned, replacing the remaining lights outside the police station with LED lights that will use less energy and also be a lot more efficient. They'll last five times as long. For other city facilities, building renovation, we're going to replace boilers in two buildings, plumbing repairs, fixtures in restrooms, carpeting, painting, wall covering, and also increased storage. And none of these projects will require financing. It's all using, all using existing funds from the budget. This coming year, we're proposing only to use $300,000 of fund balance. By comparison, this past year, it was $750,000, and the year before, almost $1.8 million. So, the capital budget before you pretty much is only using new revenues with the exception of $300,000, and again, the only debt is for the radio system. As previously mentioned, about 28% of our total debt service is reimbursed by Western or Warren County, and the budget does include $6 million of general fund debt payment, including the ballpark and ITA. Just in review, we hope that the proposed capital budget continues priority community impact projects that have been established in recent years. Obviously, we're funding the largest city capital need for technology in several years with the radio system, and this budget provides for some very vital equipment replacement, facility improvements, and technology enhancements. At this time, I will turn it back to Katie, who will go over the agency appropriations with you.
Mr. Danny?
Thank you, Mayor. One question, Mike. Where is the money pertaining to the upgrades that we have requested for this bill, city hall bill?
That's the current budget, the year that we're in right now.
Okay, so...
I'm sorry, do you mean this building, or do you mean security, I mean, this room or security?
Security.
Security. That's current, that's current budget.
We're negotiating with the contractor on the final presentation.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay. Looking at our agency funding history, you can see that in fiscal year 2008, we hit a high mark, and that was about six years ago, with about $1.7 million of funding. This is strictly the city-created contract agencies, so that does not include the additional money that we had provided to a competitive group of agencies, which was another $250,000 to $300,000 for both fiscal year eight and nine. By fiscal year 10, we had removed the competitive agencies, and we were just looking at the contract agencies at that point. And we've also implemented what we consider to be a controlled phase-out program for some of the contract agencies, and that was implemented with the adoption of the fiscal year 11 budget and brought us through fiscal year 13. So as we go into fiscal year 14, we recommend funding the remaining contract agencies at their requested amounts, which is about $1.2 million, excuse me, $1,268,584. Most of this, most of the requests this year were for the same amount as they received in fiscal year 13. Only community action for transit services and the regional airport requested increases. With the removal of the Friends of L&amp;N Depot, since FY 13 was its last year, it's a net increase of $6,750 to the budget for contract agencies. And here, you can see the 12 remaining agencies, the amounts that are being allocated for each, which is, again, as I mentioned, just slightly up by half, half of 1% for next There are two additional recommendations that go along with the agency funding, and that includes money that we set aside each year for the city's share of any grant, any grants that the airport receives. We do have a, I think it's a four-way share that we do, or a three-way share that we do with the FAA, the county, and the city, and that's about $45,625 in this year's budget. And then, we also provide a dollar-for-dollar match of the employee pledges for United Way, and for fiscal year 2013, that amount was $12,325. And the total general fund represents 2.5%, the total agency funding represents 2.5% of the general fund expenditures. At this time, we'd like to open it up for any questions, if you have any, and yes, I will adjust the air for you. And I do also want to, I know Jeff mentioned it earlier, and Kevin mentioned it as well, but I also want to thank Erin Ballou for all the work that she's done on putting together the budget document that you have in your binders, as well as this presentation. I don't think we could have made a May 21 presentation to you all as you had requested if it had not been for her assistance in getting that done and helping me out with that. It was a tremendous amount of work, and she deserves the credit for that. So, does anyone have any questions? And I'll run back and adjust the air conditioning, so give me just a second.
Questions for staff regarding budget? Yes, sir?
Jeff. I have one on the radio system. Going to use the cash we have on hand, we're going to finance 1.1 million, and you had made a comment, a shorter term. What term are you looking at for that debt?
I'm probably looking at a five-to-seven-year term. I'm going to try to keep it to $150,000 or less on the debt service, if, knock on wood, as we sometimes do. I think I can get it under 1% if I can get it to five years or so.
Going through my notes, I'd put in here, pay it off as soon as possible, but once that's paid off, is, and you all may have already begun thinking about this, a fund for future needs and that?
As you'll hopefully pass tonight, this new organization, the management group, the four-member management group, part of its responsibilities to create a yearly budget, which will have basically manager, I mean, maintenance assessment in there, as well as the money that we hopefully will receive from other people who want to participate in the charge-offs to them.
So, and that's part of it, but an ongoing, when this system needs upgrading, is there going to be a fund set aside so that in the future, is, are you talking about the same thing, or is it, I know you have the maintenance cost of funding, of maintaining the system, but what I'm thinking about is that a commission, I don't know when, 10 years from now, doesn't have the same issue of worrying about going into debt for something that we have a fund, similar maybe to the medical fund?
We have, we've had an 800 radio system fund for a long time. It's a special revenue fund where all of the chart, the user fees go into. My thought was, once we set up the user fee structure, where the city's basically, we're city and county are paying ourselves, we're going to charge ourselves for the radios, we dump that into this fund, and it sits there and accumulates, and any other users that we decide to let on to use, let those fees dump into the fund, and then, we kind of grow that, grow that fund balance as seed money for 10, 15 years from now, where we've got a jumpstart on the next system. Now, once we get the debt service paid, that, if it comes out to be $150,000 a year, if we can knock that out in the first five or seven years, if we're accustomed to paying that $150,000 over every year, we might as well continue that too, and instead of paying debt service, just keep dumping that extra...
That was going to be my next thought.
Money in there for the, for the out years after the debt's paid, but that's my unofficial, that's kind of my unofficial plans and thoughts on how we go forward.
Well, we know that the radio system at some point in the future will have to be replaced again, so, again, my comment is just to make sure that we make some provisions moving forward for that to happen.
We don't expect to be fully depreciated and have enough to buy the car new whenever we need a new one, but I think, like Jeff said, we'll have saved and put a dent in.
And exponentially, we were surprised by the amount that this radio system was first bid. We certainly need to prepare at those kind of growth levels, that the next system is going to be that much more.
Yeah. I think we had a pretty good handle on them now. Right, we have a good group, understands those principles, and I think we know the rules of engagement, and I think we have a better chance of success in the future on this one.
The only other comment, I get it, is not for you, Jeff, is that there were some themes running through that no-tax increases included, low debt, conservative projections, 20% reserve values, reduction in the workforce, with the exception of public safety. I just want to applaud not only the staff that developed this, but all the city staff being able to work under these constraints, and what I heard there, I think we would be the envy of a lot of places in the, in the country. And again, I think that you all did a magnificent job, and if the public, there's plenty of books, anybody wants to look at that stuff. Just an amazing job that you all have, have done, not just this year, but over the years, and making sure we stay very solvent.
Once you do actually adopt the budget in July, that entire budget document will be put online on our website, so the public will be able to download that or look at it at any time they'd like to. There's one other, I'm sorry, Kevin.
You're going to talk about performance measurements in the book this year?
I can, if you'd like.
Yeah, I want you to do that.
Okay. Before I forget, though, we do have, we're going to present to you the budget ordinance at the June, first meeting in June, I think, June 4th. We do have a couple adjustments we do need to make in the budget. One of them is about $15,000 transfer in in revenue that got overlooked, so it's a small amount, but we need to get that addressed, and so, that's going to just bump the number up on the revenue for all funds slightly, so we do want to let you know about that. So when we do present the final budget re- So when we do present the final budget recommendation to you, there'll be a couple tweaks in that. This, again, was, was kind of quick for us to get to you and present, so just a small amount of money, considering we're pretty pleased that that's about all that was looked over. But in regard to performance measurements, this is one of the first years that we've actually included it in the budget document, probably back in 2008 or before we used to. But we started going with a Center for Performance Measurement through the International City-County Management Association in 2008, 2007, 2008, and this year, we included in the budget document some additional performance measurements, some of which come from the surveys that we fill out each year for the Center for Performance Measurement, and then some are internally developed by each department to be more reflective of some items that they may have. What the Center for Performance Measurement allows us to do is to compare with other jurisdictions that participate in their program, so we get a more national comparison with the services that we provide and compared to other cities and communities throughout the United States. So again, we did include some information in your booklet about that. There was fiscal year 11 actual data, 12 data, and then what we proposed for 13 to end out in, in our targets for FY 14. I think there's about three to five or six for each department, but again, if you have any questions about that, we'd be glad to answer any, any that you have.
Any other comments or questions? Judging from our silence, I think you've significantly impressed us to the fact that we understand and know what's going on. I think, as Billy said, I think I can speak for all of us, that we're very pleased with, with how well you try to manage our funds and provide the services that Bowling Green needs and as a municipality, so thank you very much. It's a strong effort, strong budget, and a good job.
Thank you.
Anything else? Any other items to be brought up before we recess to the regular session? See you back at...